Mayor and Council, I've got two corrections. I'd actually ask that the council remove item number fourteen and number sixteen. There's still some negotiation that needs to be done with item fourteen, and we did not receive favorable bids for item sixteen, so we're not going to be looking into taking actions on those.
I'll make a motion to approve that with those exceptions.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor, second by Chad to approve the council agenda with the corrections. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, invocation is from the Mathana House of Prayer. Good evening.
Good evening to everyone. Lord God, our blessed heavenly Father, we honor and praise your name this evening. We thank you for all your goodness and blessings over us and the city of Hutchinson. We invoke your presence in our midst as we pray that your wisdom and favor be with our mayor, the administrator, the counselors, and all concerned authorities as they make efficient choices and decisions for the benefit of our city. Bless their families as well as these leaders serve our community. Father God, may your protection be upon the leaders of our nation and enable them to strive their utmost to do what is right in your eyes for the peace and safety of our country. Be with and protect our armed forces, our police, first responders, postal service, firefighters, and sanitary workers as they serve the people. We pray that you will impart wisdom to the ones who make the laws, that they will see that justice with fairness is carried on. Oh Lord God, bless our hospitals, educational institutions, and businesses as they work towards making Hutchinson a better place. Heavenly Father, Creator and Sustainer of our lives, we bring this request to you in the holy name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? I just want to recognize our police department, fire department, and everybody that was involved in searching for one of our elderly people that fell into the river. I know it was high water, pretty dangerous, and I know they're still searching, but I just had a few people that come up and asked me to recognize their efforts in trying to recover them, so I just wanted to put that out there. Citizens addressing the council. Anybody want to address the council? Please come forward. Alright, approval of minutes. We have regular meeting minutes of September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Make a motion to approve them.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, consent agenda to be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Is reappointment of Cheryl Dooley to the Airport Commission to September two thousand twenty-four. B is approval of resolution number one-five-one-zero-two, resolution to sell at auction surplus property to John Deere Lawn Mower. C is claims on appropriation contract payments, register A. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
Make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the consent agenda, register A. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, we have claims of appropriation contract payments, register B. I have a check on there for my business, so I'll be abstaining.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve with me abstaining. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, we do not have a public hearing. I am going to move up under new business before we go into the presentation of the National Community Survey results. I'm going to move up resolution number one-five-one-oh-one, resolution authorizing insurance of five million eight hundred and sixty thousand, general obligation improvement and refund bond series two thousand A.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, today we're here to sell some bonds, issue debt on behalf of the city. There's two components essentially to this year's debt. The first component is what you see every year with our street improvements, and the three projects we're financing this year are Fifth Avenue South Reconstruction, the South Grade Road Corridor Improvements, and the Technology Drive Construction. And then the other component this year is related to the two thousand nine water and sewer bonds. We're going to take advantage of the low interest rates and refinance those two issuances. So that'll result in an increase in our cash flow within the water sewer funds with the lower interest rate and lower debt service. But on the roadway improvements, I just wanted to remind people that the debt related to the roadway improvements is paid by two components. One is the special assessments levied against the property owners, and those property owners have ten years to repay that to the city. And then the other component is the debt tax levy that the city issues taxes basically to repay those costs. Right now, we're at a two-point-two million dollar debt levy, and with this issuance tonight that Nick is going to talk about, this issuance fits in there real nicely. We don't have any concerns. It follows all the parameters of our debt management plan, so that is good. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Nick Canhut. He's going to go over the results of the sale today, and I hope you guys are as happy as I am.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. Nick Canhut, Ellersen Associates, financial advisor to the city. And first, I should give some kudos to Andy. We did affirm the city's double-A minus rating for this bond issue, so they standard and pores did a full evaluation using the city's latest financial audits, as well as a discussion with staff, and they felt very strongly on the city's credit position. We did note there is a report that they do produce as part of that. Many of the indicators have improved since last year's bond issue where they did the same type of evaluation. They've noted some strengthening in the economic indicators, as well as in the city's financial health. So all of that boiled together affirmed the city's strong credit position and set the tone for the bids that were received this morning. We did receive six bids to purchase the city's bonds. Again, bonds issued for new projects, as well as refinancing existing utility debt of the city. Those six bids, the low bid came from the Baker Group office out of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, at a one-point-eight true interest cost on their bid. The high bid of the six came in at one-point-nine-six. That's a sixteen basis point difference. If you just account for the differential in interest costs between those two bids, it's about a fifty-seven thousand dollar difference in future debt service costs between the two. So decent amount of savings between the low and the high. The bids in between were all sort of dispersed, but there were a kind of a cluster of bids in that one-point-eight, so some consensus in the marketplace. The bid from the Baker Group, which we will be recommending for your approval, does provide for all of the proceeds necessary for the projects, as well as to execute refinancing of the existing water and sewer bonds. But it did include, as well as we've seen in recent years, some premium within the structuring, basically a trade-off that they're willing to offer you more money upfront in exchange for receiving a higher interest payment on the back end. I had a discussion with Andy, there's no reason for us to keep any of those additional proceeds. So in exchange for that, we downsize the amount of issue, so you'll have lower principal amount outstanding, less to repay over the term. You still get enough for the projects, but we make this as efficient as possible. So the resulting reduction is a bond issue of five-point-four million dollars. So the final resolution for approval, should you choose to move forward and accept the bid from the Baker Group, would be for five million four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars of financing, rather than the five-point-eight that we set up within the pre-sale and our discussion last month.
And Mayor and Council, that resolution's on your desk.
So in addition to a lower expected interest cost, that lower interest rate results in more savings when we are refinancing the existing debt. And when you boil it all down, what we had anticipated to be roughly about two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars in reduced debt service from refinancing at today's rates, as a result of this bid, the actual future value savings, so the savings you'll achieve over the life of those bonds, is three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand nine-hundred-and-forty dollars, so quite a significant chunk of change and a very good result. Now, you don't save all that right away. It'll be accumulated over time as you pay down those balances versus what was on the books before today. But a considerable amount and represents about a nine-point-seven percent savings on the debt service that you were expected to pay. So quite a reduction and a very good result. Other than that, you know, the transaction is set for closing on November fifth. That's when the funds would be wired into the city's accounts to reimburse money already expended on the project, as well as provide for ongoing expenditures, and then as well to provide to take out the existing two thousand and nine bonds that are being refinanced. So before the council, subject to any of your questions, is a updated resolution provided from your bond attorney for awarding the sale of five million four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand in general obligation improvement and refunding bonds, series twenty-nineteen A, and awarding that bid to the Baker Group. Be happy to stand by for any questions in the council. Thank you.
Just curious, Andy or Matt, maybe it's more of a question for you. You know, we get the bond sales this morning. Now we're approving it right now. Is there a reason it has to be approved that same night? You know, get these documents, you know, at the meeting, and not that it's we ever change anything, just kind of curious since the closing's on November fifth, you said.
Yeah, so the market reprices itself on a daily basis. And so, you know, they're making an offer or a proposal to the city, fully contingent on the council's approval, that they'll lock in these rates for today.
For today.
Expecting that you will consider that award, and if you want to reject, you know, you could potentially rebid at some point in the future. Not recommending that, given the nature of the rates that were proposed.
You don't think we'd want to do that?
It's possible. And we are, in some sense, handcuffed by, you know, the council meeting schedule as well, but that is why it was set up that way.
That's a great price.
It is. And, you know, we talked about how this bond issuance is a little higher than usual. We're above that one-point-nine million dollar target each year, but this lower interest rate offset that to where we're actually paying less in our tax levy than we had originally anticipated. So that's a positive.
We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the resolution number one-five-one-zero-one. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation of the two thousand nineteen National Community Survey results.
Mayor and Council, good evening, good afternoon. This is in front of you. Actually, you guys, I think, received it a couple of weeks ago through email, but this is really our public presentation on the results of the two thousand nineteen National Community Survey. As you recall, it's our goal to do this about every four years, and so this started this past spring and concluded, actually, I think the end of July was when the survey closed and all the computing of the data was done in September. We received those raw results probably mid-end of September, and so this is really the presentation of those results for both the council and for the public as a whole. Couple of things that I do want to note, these are included in the council packet, both that you guys received and what's online. And then after today, this will get posted on our website for the public to view. But this is really a summary of the Community Livability Report, the dashboard of summary findings and the trends over time. So this really takes a look, not only at the survey we've done this year, but then it also compares to how do those results compare to the surveys that we did in seven, eleven, and fifteen. And so this is really kind of a summary presentation of those three reports. Feel free to stop me along the way. I'm going to try to go through this, not in necessarily quick fashion, but just to kind of get through it, and there's a lot of information here. Obviously, there's a lot more in your packet. But just a little bit of background first on the community survey. It actually used to be called the Citizen Survey, but they've since updated that name. But it is an affordable, comprehensive, statistically accurate survey solution for local governments. This is a scientific-based survey. It's a collaboration of the National Research Center and the International City County Management Association. It assesses aspects of community life, local government service quality, and resident participation in community activities. I always like to highlight, the survey captures residents' opinions, and the results are based on residents' perceptions. So it's important for us to keep that in mind. Once again, this is based off of opinions and perceptions, and it's something we need to take into consideration. As we've shared in the past, we use this survey to help guide and set policies that we do here at the city. That's why we try to strive for, you know, the residents to fill it out and give us that feedback. It describes areas where the community believes things are going well and sheds lights on areas that could benefit from improvement. That's kind of a summary of what it is. The survey measures Hutchinson's quote-unquote "livability." A livable community is a place that is not simply habitable, but that is desirable. It's not only where people do live, but where they want to live. That's essentially what we're measuring. And there are eight facets of a livable community. So safety, mobility, natural environment, the built environment, economy, recreation, wellness, education, enrichment, community engagement. That's really what this survey measures from a community aspect, really those eight facets of a livable community. And that's what the results will highlight as we go through, as we go through the, you know, the survey. And I'll touch on, I'll highlight it here and come back to it, but based off the results, the two most important things that our community identified was safety and the economy. That was the same as the results I received back in two thousand and fifteen. So when we look at the trend, what I guess sticks in people's minds is how safe are they and how's the economy, I mean, economy doing? So when you look at the eight facets of a community, that kind of boils down into three pillars. So the eight facets of a community act as an indicator of the community, and within these eight facets are three pillars of community quality. Three pillars of quality community are as follows, the community characteristics, governance, and participation. And so you take those eight facets and you kind of boil them down into those, you know, three pillars, and that's kind of, once again, what that survey is taking a look at. So the survey takes into account that great communities are partnerships of the government, private sector, community-based organizations, and residents. The survey captures the residents' opinions on the community. So of the seventeen hundred surveys that went out, the results are the opinion of five-hundred-and-forty residents. That's what we received back as a response, which is a thirty-two percent response rate. Now, I think we had something like twenty-one that were returned to us as undeliverable, so that gets factored into that response rate, too. Households were randomly selected, and the survey has a margin error plus or minus four percent. Looking back at our two thousand fifteen survey, we had a thirty-seven percent response rate, and that was based off of fourteen hundred surveys. So as the National Community Survey has expanded from year to year, they've, you know, I think the small package that we did was fourteen hundred. That's been expanded to seventeen hundred. And you can always pay more and do more, you know, samplings of households, too, so that's something to keep in mind in the future. Obviously, we'd love to see that response rate be higher, but actually, we're on the high end of response rates. The average response rate's usually in the twenty to thirty percent range when it comes to your benchmark communities that we're looking at. So we're even at thirty-two percent, we're on the high end of those that are responding to the survey. This is the fourth time the city has conducted the survey, as I noted before. The survey looks at life in two thousand nineteen and also compares it to our results in two thousand seventeen, eleven, and fifteen, and compares our results to a nationwide benchmark. And if anybody's interested in what those communities are, I have all of those. They're anywhere from one hundred and fifty to three hundred and some communities, depending on the question that's answered, but it's spread out throughout the whole United States. Additionally, we, this year for, which was something new for us, we did have an online opt-in option, and we received one hundred and twenty-nine responses to that. The results I'm showing tonight do not include those online opinions because it's not necessarily scientifically based. We have no way to know whether or not those people lived in town and filled it out or were from out of town. But there's a separate report, if anyone's interested in seeing that, where they can look at what the responses are from the online. My looking at it, on average, it's about three to ten percentage points lower than what the mail-in survey response rates were. So it's something to keep in mind. So I'm going to jump into the survey results as we look at those pillars and facets of the community. The first part of the survey touched on the quality of life in Hutchinson. When we talk about the quality of life, what does that mean? It's what makes a community livable, attractive, and a place where people want to be. We're really looking to measure the quality of, or the quality of life represents the natural ambiance, services, amenities that make for an attractive community. That's kind of what we're trying to get to with asking those questions. In two thousand nineteen, eighty-four percent of the residents rated the quality of life in Hutchinson as excellent or good, and this is an improvement from seventy-nine percent, of which we received back in two thousand fifteen. Ratings are similar to other communities across the nation. As in fifteen, and I touched on this a little bit earlier, residents identified safety and the economy as priorities for Hutchinson, for the Hutchinson community in the coming two years. Both received positive ratings by the residents, as we'll touch on as we get into more details within the survey. Mobility, natural environment, built environment, recreation, wellness, education, and enrichment, and community engagement also received positive and similar ratings to other communities. So pillar one was, as we look at those community characteristics, for the two thousand nineteen, ninety percent of the residents rated the city as an excellent or good place to live. This is an improvement from eighty-four percent in two thousand and fifteen. Seventy-seven percent had an excellent or good overall image of the community. Once again, this is an eight-point jump from the results that we received in two thousand and fifteen, and kind of been somewhat of a trend up after it had been somewhat trending down. And then eighty percent viewed their neighborhood as a good to excellent place to live. And all three of those responses were similar to what you've considered to be the benchmark, but were increases over what we saw in two thousand and fifteen. I don't want to be negative, but roughly only two percent rated the community as a poor place to live. So, and I think it was two percent back in fifteen, too, just to, if I'm going to be fair to those that said it was really good, two percent don't care for us, so I shouldn't say that. Continuing on with the community characteristics, eighty-four percent viewed Hutchinson as a good to excellent place to raise children. That's a slight increase from two thousand fifteen, similar to our national benchmarks. Sixty-eight percent viewed Hutchinson as a good to excellent place to retire. Once again, this is similar to other communities, but it's an eight percent jump from what we saw in two thousand and fifteen, and eleven percent, we go back to two thousand and seven. And then eighty-nine percent viewed the overall appearance of Hutchinson as good to excellent. Once, once again, this was another increase from the survey results in two thousand and fifteen. When you look at something like that overall appearance, there's, that, we can compare that to three hundred and thirty-four communities. That was kind of what the benchmark is. That places us at seventy-nine out of three hundred and thirty-four. Just so you kind of have an idea of, when we look at that benchmark, we're more on the upper third percent of the national benchmark comparisons. So what are some of the strengths of the community characteristics? Overall, at least six in ten respondents positively scored the majority of the aspects of community characteristics, which is similar to the national benchmarks. Ratings for many aspects improved from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, with most increases concentrated within the economy, education, enrichment, and community engagement. Aspects of public safety received a positive rating by about nine in ten residents. Roughly ninety-seven percent responded, said they felt safer in their neighborhood, and ninety-six percent felt safe in the downtown commercial area, which to me is just a great representation of what people feel, at least when it comes to safety within the community. Paths and walking trails, ease of walking and travel by bicycle were rated as excellent, are good by about eight in ten respondents. All three of those areas rated higher than the national average. Just for comparison, the availability of paths and walking trails ranked forty-one out of three hundred and four communities that were surveyed. Ease of walking ranked forty-second out of two hundred and ninety-eight, and the ease of travel by bike ranked thirty-eight out of two hundred and ninety, ninety-seven communities. And then aspects of the natural environment received a positive rating by at least eight in ten residents, which eighty-seven percent rated the overall natural environment as good to excellent. Areas with the highest increase, this is more than a ten percent jump from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. Ratings for public parking increased from fifty-six percent to sixty-eight percent.
How much public parking did we add in that time, Matt?
I don't know if we added any public parking in.
We fixed a lot. Yeah, that's what I was going to say, yeah.
New development, which I think we can see that, especially when you look back at the last four years, increased from forty-eight percent in two thousand fifteen to fifty-eight percent. Hutchinson Public Places, places to go, increased from sixty-seven to seventy-eight percent. The viewpoint of the overall economic health increased from fifty-seven percent to sixty-seven percent. And the availability of affordable quality food increased from sixty-one percent to seventy-three percent. I know we've had additional options that have come into the community in that time period. K through twelve education increased from sixty-eight percent to eighty-two percent. And we've got a new building that's obviously come on board since that time. And openness and acceptance of community toward people of diverse backgrounds increased from thirty-eight percent to fifty percent from fifteen to nineteen. Once again, these are the opinions and the perceptions of the community as they respond to the survey. Other areas with a higher rating in two thousand nineteen compared to two thousand fifteen, and this was those that had at least a six, six percent increase, so anything that was under six percent, whether it was positive or negative, they view it as being kind of stable. So this is really other areas that had a higher, some of this obviously isn't going to surprise So this is really other areas that had a higher, some of this obviously isn't going to surprise us based off of some of the responses we received earlier. But overall, the feeling of safety increased from eighty-two to eighty-eight percent. Employment opportunities increased from forty-eight to fifty-five percent. Hutchinson as a place to visit increased from fifty-seven percent to sixty-five percent. Once again, these are favorable viewpoints. Hutchinson as a place to work increased from sixty-seven to seventy-five percent. Recreational opportunities increased from sixty-four to seventy-two percent. Education and enrichment opportunities, sixty-six to seventy-three percent. Cultural arts, music activities increased from fifty-nine percent in two thousand and fifteen to sixty-six percent. I want to say that's the third or fourth straight year that we've seen that aspect increase. So I think, and I, you know, we think back to probably the last ten, fifteen years, there's more and more activities that are going on in the community and the communities are responding to that in a positive manner. Neighborliness increased from fifty-two percent to fifty-eight percent. Opportunities for participating in community matters increased from fifty-seven percent to sixty-five percent since the last survey. Now, that's touching on the positive. Areas for improvement, when you look at the community characteristics, there was really one that jumped out. Only thirty-four percent of the responding public stated they felt there was sufficient shopping opportunities, which is below the national average and was down from forty-one percent in two thousand and fifteen. Now, is there a whole lot the city of Hutchinson can do about that? I mean, I think outside of continuing to try to foster an environment that's gonna do so for growth, to me, this is something you try to broadcast to those businesses that are out there that may be looking at coming to our community, is that there is a desire for more shopping opportunities. At least, that's what the people in our community are saying. Just for comparison, that ranked two hundred and twenty-nine out of two hundred and eighty-five communities. So there's at least a desire or perception pinned from our residents that we need more shopping opportunities in this community. Some of the other areas that were below fifty percent, or really less than half a percent, or half of the residents had a positive rating on. But I will note these were similar to the national average. Travel by public transportation was at forty-one percent. Quite frankly, we don't have a large public transportation system in Hutchinson. Affordable quality housing was at forty-three percent. A vibrant downtown commercial area at forty-two percent. Unfavorability and cost of living at thirty-nine percent. Once again, these are all similar to benchmarks, to what the national average is. But I want to highlight these are areas that were below half the residents viewing as being favorable. I know this has just been a topic of discussion, you know, over the last couple of years. Ratings for childcare preschool availability decreased from fifty-seven percent in two thousand and fifteen to fifty-one percent in two thousand and nineteen. But that's still within the national average, the national benchmark. So we're gonna look at pillar two. This is governance. The governance aspects that the survey touched on, and really that asked how well does the government of Hutchinson meet the needs and expectations of its residents? This measures the overall quality of services provided by Hutchinson, as well as the manner in which these services are provided. It's really a key component of how residents rate the quality of life. So really, how are we providing services to our residents? Seventy-eight percent of the residents rated the overall quality of services provided by the city as excellent or good. This is up from seventy percent in two thousand and fifteen. One thing to note, at least when it comes to the federal government, they received a rating of forty-five percent compared to our seventy-eight percent. That's actually above the national average. So we're actually on the higher end for those that view, when it comes to the viewpoint of how the federal government is operating. So responses evaluate over thirty individual services and amenities available in Hutchinson. And over half of the services provided by Hutchinson received improved scores from the survey participants in two thousand and nineteen when it comes to the governance section. Seventy-eight percent gave the city's customer service a positive rating, up from seventy-one percent in two thousand and fifteen. Fifty-two percent gave a positive rating in regards to the value of services for taxes paid. Another fifty-nine percent of the residents rated the overall direction of the city as excellent or good, that we're heading in the right direction. And then fifty-three percent stated the city was welcoming of citizen involvement. And all of those are similar to other communities throughout the nation. And one thing, too, even just looking at something like citizen involvement and that, seeing that increase from forty-four to fifty-three percent, there's been some things that we've done over the last four years to hopefully try to address some of that. Even just presence on social media, some of, so you want to be an elected official, some of, you know, you hope some of that has increased some of that positive. You know, we try to, as a staff, get out and communicate and go to events and talk to people. And so that's why it's important that we do this survey. Those are some of the things that, we don't just do it to report on this every four years. We should be, and we'll touch on this at the end, using this information to look at, okay, there are ways that we can improve our services or address areas of need within the community. Fifty-five percent of the respondents stated they were confident in the city government. This is the second time this question was asked. That's a fourteen percent increase from two thousand and fifteen. Another fifty-eight percent stated the city was acting in the best interest of Hutchinson. That's a fifteen percent increase from two thousand and fifteen. Sixty-three percent stated the city was being honest, which is great. Hopefully strive to be honest all the time, but that's an increase from fifteen as well. Then fifty-eight percent stated the city treats all residents fairly, which is up from forty-three percent. Once again, all these ratings are similar to other communities throughout the nation that participate in this survey. So some of the strengths of aspects of good governance. Public services received a positive rating in at least eight in ten residents. Police services at eighty-seven percent, fire services at ninety-six percent. Ambulance EMS services, fire prevention, garbage collection, recycling, yard waste pickup, sewer services, power utility, utility billing, city parks, public libraries, seasonal leave control are all over eighty percent. The one thing I didn't put on there that we included in the survey last year was the mosquito spraying. That came in at seventy-four percent positive rating. That was the same rating that had in two thousand and fifteen. So roughly three out of four still appreciate the fact that we're spraying for mosquitoes.
Which is funny, because I never talk to anybody that doesn't appreciate that service.
Yeah, me neither.
That and the leaf pickup.
We still get mosquitoes, so it's not working totally. Fix that, John.
Seventy-eight percent rated street lighting in town as excellent or good, which is higher than the national average and up from sixty-eight percent in two thousand and fifteen. That ranked thirty-three out of three hundred and thirty-one communities, so they appreciate the street lighting that we're doing in town. And one other thing to note, too, is that all pillars in the governance section were higher by seven to sixteen percentage points from the two thousand and fifteen survey. So at least from the responses of the survey, they viewed what we're doing here as a city to be very positive. Areas with the highest increases, which is once again more than ten percent. Ratings for animal control increased. Ratings for emergency preparedness and is the city ready for that. Traffic enforcement, sidewalk maintenance, traffic signal timing, that one, I'll have to admit, surprised me. Because that's probably one of the ones we get the most complaints on. But maybe people were feeling good that day, I don't know, so. Land use planning and zoning services, and ratings for recreation centers increased from sixty-one to seventy-eight percent. All of those saw a significant increase, I guess, more than ten percent in the viewing of the public and how that's being done. Other areas with high ratings, once again, police services increased from seventy-eight to eighty-seven percent. Feeling of crime prevention increased. Snow removal, and I'll note that this is gradually continuing to increase. I think back in seven, we were below fifty percent. But each of the surveys since then, we've seen a significant increase in our snow removal services. And generally, you've got three in four residents that are, three out of every four residents are satisfied with it. So kudos to John and his staff when it comes to that. Natural area preservation increased. Power utility increased from eighty-two to eighty-nine percent. And I'll say there was one hundred and eighty-two communities that surveyed that, and we were seventeenth out of the one hundred and eighty-two when it comes to the viewpoint of our public power utility. So even cable television, economic development services, and the special events that take place within the community all received a favorable increase. Touch on the less favorable, and this is one we've touched on in the past and it continues to come forward to us. Only twenty-six percent of the responding public gave a positive rating to street repair. That's below the national average and down from thirty-two percent in two thousand and fifteen. One thing to keep in mind, we increased street spending by four hundred thousand dollars from fifteen to nineteen. And we still saw a six percent drop in the opinions, once again, the opinions and the perceptions of street repair within the community.
I think they're thinking it's the parking lot at the mall.
That's what I was gonna say.
I mean, everybody keeps saying that. Why don't you fix that parking lot?
But, you know, to me, this is two straight surveys that's jumped out at us. And I think it's something that, and we'll touch on this towards the end of my presentation, something we need to address. Whether it's asking those questions, okay, which roads are really bad and need to be fixed? I mean, that's maybe our next step is to really dive into that, to go, okay, you're telling us, you mean, three out of four people are saying you're not doing a good enough job on street repairs. And like I said, in that timeframe, we increased the spending in that by four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that, just to be clear, that four hundred thousand was to fix all the frost boil blowups for the most part, wasn't it, then?
No, that was our...
...per year, the increase in the...
That was one year. The increase was in fifty, that was our...
Oh, the bonding, yeah. But we also increased another four hundred thousand this year.
Two hundred thousand this year. So, you know, if you were to do a cumulative, we've almost put two million dollars of new money into the roads in that time period, so. These other services received positive ratings from less than half the residents, but were similar to national average. Bus or transit services, once again, that's not a large item we have. And then code enforcement, and that was, both of those are actually even up from two thousand and fifteen when it comes to favorability. The third pillar is participation. And the idea behind that is that an engaged community harnesses its most valuable resources, its residents. The connections and trust among residents, government, businesses, and other organizations help to create a sense of community. So that's kind of what we're looking at with these set of questions when it comes to this survey. Sixty-one percent of the residents rated the sense of community in Hutchinson as excellent or good, which is up from fifty-eight percent in fifteen. Eighty-seven percent would recommend Hutchinson as a place to live, which is a slight increase from fifteen. Another eighty-eight percent plan to remain in Hutchinson for the next five years, which is an increase from eighty-four percent the last survey. And I would say for staff, this is not surprising. I'll be honest, I'm surprised it's even this high. But only forty percent of the respondents have contacted a city employee within the last twelve months. And you can see that, I don't know, steady or even fast decline. It was sixty percent in two thousand and seven, and we're down to forty percent the last two surveys within the last twelve months. I mean, that's still similar to what other communities, what those responses are. But you've seen that number continue to decline over the years. Some of the strengths, so when it comes to aspects of participation, once again, these are received, at least a favorable response from eight in ten residents. Eighty-five percent reported they did not report a crime. Another nine, two percent stated they were not a victim of a crime. Ninety-four percent recycle at home. Ninety-eight percent purchase goods or services in Hutchinson. Eighty-three percent visit a city park. Eighty percent are eating their fruits and vegetables, goodness. Another eighty-one percent participated in physical activity. Ninety-two percent talked or visited with a neighbor. Eighty-six percent, another eighty-six percent done a favor for a neighbor. Eighty-one percent read or watched local news, and eighty-six percent voted in local elections. When it comes to participation, Hutchinson rated higher than the national average in the following. Roughly ninety, fifty-nine percent of our, at least the respondents, work in Hutchinson. And we've noted that in the past, that we have a high rate of people that live in town and work in town. That's actually out of the two hundred and fifty-two communities that responded, we're forty-fifth in that rating, if you want to say. Areas with the highest increase, more than ten percent when it comes to acts of, aspects of participation, that we saw more residents using rec centers in town, that increased from fifty-four to sixty-five percent. Other areas with a higher rating, which is positive, made home energy more efficient, increased from seventy to seventy-eight percent. And those that the economy will have a positive impact on the income increase from twenty-one percent in two thousand and fifteen to twenty-eight percent in two thousand and nineteen. Areas for improvement, once again, there's not a whole lot I'm sure we can do about this, but it is good to point out. When it comes to participation, Hutchinson rated lower than the national average in the following. Stock supplies for emergency, we were on that same low end the last survey, too. We're, I guess, we're just not a community that's stocking supplies in case something happens. Use public transportation instead of driving, and we've touched on that, it's only ten percent. Campaign for an issue, cause or candidate, it's only thirteen percent. About one in ten people are actually out there, at least from the survey, campaigning for an issue, cause or candidate. Eighty-one percent noted they read or watched the local news, which is still fairly high, but that's down seven percent from two thousand and fifteen. Some of the other areas that received positive ratings from less than half the residents, but were similar to the national average, and that had to do with carpooling instead of driving. Once again, most of our people are working in town, so you're probably not seeing a high percentage of that. Noted the economy will have a positive impact on income. Contact an elected official, fourteen percent. You know, I think, we talk about this, you know, from whether they're campaigning for an issue or they're contacting their elected officials. Whether there's a lot of chatter on social media around the public, only one in ten people at best are actually contacting elected officials. Forty-eight percent are volunteering their time, another twenty-nine percent participate in a club. Sixteen percent attend a local meeting, and only twenty-eight percent are watching a local public meeting. So less than two in ten are really participating in the process. With that being said, they have very positive reviews on the services that we're providing, so I don't know if that coordinates with anything. We had three special topics that we asked within the survey for this upcoming year. One of them was, how much would you support or oppose a voter-approved renewal of the HASSENTS sales tax after it expires to make improvements to city-owned recreational facilities? Up on, obviously, the screen, that's the results of that survey. Roughly sixty-nine percent strongly are somewhat support renewal of that for that purpose. If we look back to our two thousand and fifteen survey, we asked a question at that time about partnering with somebody, with other entities, to build a multipurpose community recreational center. And there was support at that time from fifty-five percent of the public. So just somewhat of a comparison, when we kind of broached the subject back in fifteen. But once again, roughly sixty-nine percent would be in favor, at least at this time, of renewing that to go towards recreational facilities. We asked the question, how important, if at all, do you think it is that the city put additional funding towards street repair and maintenance? Roughly seventy-nine percent said it was essential to, very important to do that. Once again, I'll note, we had done that since the last survey. But they're saying it is essential to do that. And so we took it even a step farther and said, okay, well, how much more would you be willing to potentially pay if that was solely dedicated towards fixing, repairing, and upgrading city streets? And I kind of put, we had a two fifty, a five hundred thousand, and a million dollar question on that. Roughly sixty-six percent supported a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar tax increase. That drops down to fifty-four percent if you're at a five hundred thousand dollar tax increase. And that support drops to thirty percent if it's at a million dollar. So I think it kind of gives you an idea that, at least, the opinions of those that responded would be comfortable potentially in that two fifty to five hundred thousand dollar range if that was solely dedicated towards street repairs.
And in the survey, it also included what the tax impact approximately would be.
Approximate would be.
So they were aware of that.
So those are the the three topics that we touched on. And so kind of, once again, that's a lot of information. We've got, I would encourage, not only the council people here in attendance, but those watching, we'll we'll post this on our on our website, the the details of the survey, but encourage them to take a look at it. But just to kind of to summarize it, so these are areas that rated higher than the national benchmark. That's availability of availability of pass and walking trails, the ease of walking in town, ease of travel by bicycle in town, the quality of street lighting, those residents that work in town. And the other thing was residents who participate in religious or spiritual activities. It's at sixty-six percent, which was higher than the national benchmark. Areas that rated lower than the national benchmark, we've touched on these, the availability of shopping opportunities, street repair services, residents stocking supplies, residents using public transportation, and then residents campaigning for an issue, cause, or or a candidate. I put up there some of what we've seen as the upward trends. And so these are, you know, seen somewhat of an upward trend over the last three or four years, where the percentage has gradually increased or stayed the same over that period. And so, you know, the viewpoint of Hutchinson as a place to raise children, the ease of walking, travel by bicycle, ease of travel by car, recreational opportunities, opportunities for cultural arts, music activities, I touched on that. Back in seven, that was at thirty-nine percent, and that's jumped up to sixty-six percent. So I would say that's kudos to those in the community that are putting on activities for the public to participate in. You know, people still appreciate our yard waste pickup service. Storm drainage continues to see an increase in favorability, sewer service, recommending Hutchinson as a place to live, planning to remain Hutchinson over the next five years, and those that are voting in election, in local elections, we're seeing a steady increase in all of all of those that are in a positive manner. Those that we've seen a downward trend, one of them is the quality of health services. And I would point, that's dropped from seventy-two to sixty-eight percent, not necessarily a significant drop, but that that showed up on there. Residents who have contacted city employees, that's not surprising to me. And then those that are watching a local public meeting dropped from sixty-one percent in two thousand and seven to twenty-eight percent in two thousand and nineteen. So four points to take from the survey. Hutchinson continues to be a desirable place to live, with safety as a feature that contributes to the quality of life. At least eight in ten community members gave high remarks to the overall quality of life in Hutchinson. The city and their neighborhood as a place to live, Hutchinson as a place to raise children in its overall appearance. More residents gave positive scores to Hutchinson as a place to retire in its overall image or reputation compared, in two thousand and nineteen compared to two thousand and fifteen. More than eight in ten respondents were likely recommend living in Hutchinson and plan to remain in Hutchinson for the next five years. And about six in ten residents favorably evaluated the sense of community in the city. Point number two, resident respondents identified safety and the economy as the main focus areas, which was the same as what they identified in two thousand and fifteen. About nine in ten stated they feel safe within the community. Almost all residents feel safe in their neighborhoods and in the downtown commercial area. Our police, fire, ambulance all had very positive reviews. Assessments of police, crime prevention, emergency preparedness, and animal control increased. As in two thousand and fifteen, survey participants highlighted the economy as a priority for the city in the next two years. At least six in ten positively related the overall economic health of Hutchinson, the city as a place to visit and to work and in the economic development. Two thousand and nineteen survey saw many increases in residence scores for their overall economic health, employment opportunities, Hutchinson as a place to visit, to work, economic development, new development. And residents in two thousand and nineteen were more likely to believe that, believe a local economy would have a positive impact on their income. Point number three, residents are generally pleased with mobility but support improvements to city streets. About eight in ten residents positively assessed their overall ease of travel in Hutchinson. And we've talked about the bicycle, walking, and pass, and street lighting all had benchmarks above the national average. More residents gave high scores of public parking, traffic enforcement, street lighting, storm removal, sidewalk maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, and traffic signal timing in nineteen compared to fifteen. However, city streets continue to be viewed less favorably by residents compared to communities nationwide. Once again, only about one in four residents read street repair positively, which was a decline from fif- from fifteen. With that being said, about eight in ten felt it was essential or very important for the city to put additional funding towards street repair and maintenance. And about three quarters of the residents supported a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar property tax increase, while six in ten supported a five hundred thousand dollar tax increase for those for street repair. And the fourth point, overall ratings in Hutchinson for two thousand and nineteen generally remained stable. Eighty-two of the hundred and thirty-four items for which comparisons were available rated similarly in two thousand and fifteen and nineteen. Three items showed a decrease in the ratings, and we we touched on those three. Forty-nine items showed an increase. Among the fifty-two total community characteristic ratings, residents assessed nineteen aspects more positively. And then over half of the governance ratings increased in two thousand and and fifteen. So what are our steps, what are the next steps? And we talked about this last time we did this survey. Really, there's no bad results. It's really intended to educate, obviously, the council, staff, and the public to really learn and hopefully improve. They, once again, these results offer insights into residents' perspectives about the community as a whole. We should be analyzing, identifying the areas to address, look at creating some action plans, and act on those results. It really does build credibility within the community. And this is something that the National Community Survey gives to us. Most communities use the results to envision, engage, earmark, educate, enact, and evaluate. And as we've, if we've shared, we've used results in fif- from the fifteen as a part of our, some of our our planning, our vision, and our future goals set within the community. One thing I did want to touch on that I think it's a valuable tool for us to consider as we move forward with this, the National Research Center has emerged with with Polco. Polco provides an online platform for communities like Hutchinson to engage with residents by inviting them to join an online panel and answer quick turnaround questions. So it's really, it's an online tool for us where we can, I'm just thinking about some of the things like chickens and some of the things that we've faced, where we can go out and ask the residents, what do you think? And we can get that, we can get that feedback from them. This, you know, this will allow, once again, allow the city to post single questions or question sets and see results in real time. The panel or those who sign up for it, participant signs up and continues to offer feedback throughout the year, so you have to, you know, want to be able to be a part of this. But the software that they are, that they do verifies our respondents, comparing those who sign up to voter lists and other sources to confirm their location in the community along with demographic information. So we can pinpoint areas of town, and we can even select areas of town that we want to ask questions about with this with this format. And so as we look at some of these questions, we've talked about, even I don't see if you've brought up the, you know, coffee with council members, which I think is still a great idea. This is another tool that we could use to say, okay, we want to know more about street repairs. Let's ask a couple of questions, let's get the public involved and see if we can get some feedback. It might be mayor, as you suggest, a mall parking lot. Or we may find out that people don't like this road, that road, and the other road, and then we need to do maybe a better job of educating or look at addressing those.
So is that a, at a cost?
It's two thousand dollars a year for that for that service.
That's pretty reasonable.
So which I think is pretty reasonable. So, once again, a lot of, lot of data, a lot of information. Any specific questions or or comments on it?
And is there, I know there is, there wasn't this time, but is there a place where you could ask the age group of the respondent?
Yep, and we, and and we do have all the demographics, and I can pull that stuff out for who, on who responded, you know, what their ages were. It's it's really, they're trying to do their best to to pull the demographics of the community in that in that survey. But yeah, we do have that.
Is it, was it a wide variety of?
Yep, yeah, unfortunately, I don't have it off the top of my head, but yes, I would say it's it's, it would match the demographics of of the community for those that responded. So again, a lot of information, something to take and chew on, and obviously, as we start looking at future planning and goal setting, to have some of this in mind.
Too late to adjust our tax levy to earmark some for roads. It would be nice to understand better.
And to me, and I shared this before, to me, I think that's a question we need to give more research on, we need to get more answers on, okay? You know, we've we've somewhat attacked it, but I think we need to dive even even deeper into that question.
Sure.
Anything else for Matt?
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
I think that other thing to educate or just have discussions on would be kind of the role of the city, you know, from the aspect of retailers, not enough shopping opportunities, well, again, what's our part in that, and as well as other things.
Maybe they want to speak, trying to do more.
All right, review of residential leaf vacuuming service. Good evening, John.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's hard to believe, but we're actually beginning the tenth year of this service. It doesn't seem like that long ago that it started, but it has been ten years. We will be beginning on Tuesday, October fifteenth, so a week from today, and that would be the Monday garbage route. And so we'll be starting on Tuesday, and the program will go through the twenty-fifth of November or until significant snow arrives, whichever comes first. Of the ten years that we've had this service running, we've only had one year where we had to quit a couple of weeks early because of snow and ice, so I'm hoping that this is another one where we don't. But just a reminder that the service will be the day after your standard garbage pickup. So if your garbage is picked up on Monday, we'll be by on Tuesday. So we provided the dates there. This information is available on the website as well. Couple of do's and do nots. Obviously, if there's vehicles parked, we can't get in there, we're not going to go in there. We have a full-size agricultural tractor and a twenty-five cubic yard trailer. It's a pretty big machine. We're gonna, we we need a little bit of room to get in and out. So if there, people are parked on top of the leaves, we're not going to be able to get get at them. We ask that people do not rake the leaves until the day before, so that night before. So get in the habit of putting it on the edge of the road, and the night that you, the day that you go grab your garbage cans and put them away, put those leaves out onto the onto this, into the gutter there. A big, big one is leaves only. If we see anything other than leaves in there, we're gonna, we may just go right on by. We don't want anything to damage the equipment. And things like sticks and another, the worst things is probably vines. They they can get knotted up in there, and it's a, it's a disaster to get them, to get them undone. So, you know, we're, I have the operators keep an eye on that as they're going on, going by, and if they see anything like that, they're gonna, they're gonna pull out and leave it. And usually, I'll try and get in contact with that property owner and make sure they don't put those kinds of things in there. We do ask that people put them in long rows along the front of your property there. Please, no piles. A long skinny row is is much, much better to, it's way more efficient for for everybody. So we ask that people would do that. There's always the question about construction. I think we only have one potential neighborhood that of maybe a half a dozen houses or so along South Grade that will be affected this year. I think the good news is, if everything goes the way it's planned to go now, they will be able to partake, you know, sometime in late, late October, early November, so there's plenty of time for them to get everything out. The other thing is there's not a ton of, ton of trees in that area. So we're hoping that we can work with those folks and just have them hold off for a few weeks until we can get in there. Everything else we should be able to get to, no problem. We don't have any other projects that are open at this point, so. Yeah, this, again, tenth year, it's always, you know, this is one of the few things that we get to do where people wave at it, at us with all their fingers, and and so that's, that's always a good thing. And guys, look forward to it. We've got three of the four vacuums ready to go. One just has a little bit, little bit of work left on it. One of the things I do know, and we will have to probably talk about this as a budget item, but we we are, we were made aware that the costs of the equipment will be going up dramatically in the next few years. So the good news is, is we bought two really cheap ones, and the other one isn't due for a few more years, so hopefully, we can see the market kind of settle itself before we have to replace anything. But we'll keep an eye on that. We'll probably have some conversations about it relative to the budget.
Lot of other, probably not too many vendors out.
There's really only about three folks that make them, and the ones that we've been purchasing, that business sold that line to another, to another manufacturer group, and and lo and behold, the prices are going up to about what the other two were charging. So imagine that, how that worked, so. So, yeah, it's a pretty significant increase over what we've been paying. So we'll just keep an eye on that, but it's something we may need to talk about as a as a budget item in the future, so.
John, you were talking about long skinny rows, so you're talking like two feet wide rows?
Yeah, if it, whatever it takes to to spread it out over the whole frontage is is what we prefer, right?
And let me tell you, spreading out over the frontage when you have sixty feet for the frontage.
Right.
You have huge oak trees.
Right.
It's really hard to get a.
Yeah, what what really is, is, is really the worst is a big pile.
Right.
It, we, you know, spread it out over, because we can always, we can always come back or back up and, you know, get after it when it's in a row. When it's in a pile, you're kind of, you're kind of limited in what you could do. Part of the reason for that is there's really only two, there's only an up and a down control that we have on the spout. And so the only, the only way you get any side-to-side action is to use the tractor to kind of get the, get the thing moving. And once, once it's swinging, it works really well. So that's why that longest, as long and narrow as you can make it is the best, so. Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. So next week, we'll be out there, and if we aren't, if you see us ahead of schedule, that's okay, we will be by the day after your garbage is picked up. We may be there early. We may be there at other times, it's just, but we will be by your your property on the day of your service, or after your garbage service, so thank you.
Mary.
Moving on to unfinished business, first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash eight oh six, ordinance revising chapter one eleven, peddlers and solicitors.
Mayor and council, and we've talked about this once or twice, or maybe three or four times, both these ordinances, so I'm not sure if you want to do it as one or or do them separately. Only thing, there, I don't believe there's been anything that's changed in the peddler's solicitor's license. Actually, nothing has changed in either one of the ordinances from what you guys have looked at in the past. The only thing that I think was included in your packet this time was some of the feedback that I received from other communities regarding, you know, their approach to the food vendor's license, and then I know I include an article from September of seventeen that kind of hopefully shed some light that it's, it's really, at least in my opinion, I think up to each individual community to decide on what they want to do when it comes to either one of these, you know, set of ordinances, rules, regulations. rules, regulations when it comes to Peddlers Solicitors, Transit Merchants and the Food Vendor License. So I'm not sure what the desire of the council is to approach this.
Well, I, I think that they keep it so we know which one we're talking about. We should just do Peddlers and Solicitors first, so we don't, because last time we kind of went back and forth. And I think that we got confused on some stuff, so I think that we should. That's right. All right, whatever you want. Let's just do the Peddlers and Solicitors first.
Right.
The storm's coming.
All righty.
So I don't, I don't think there's anything really to add, except that neither one of the ordinances have changed, at least from the last consideration.
As far as I'm concerned, I think the Peddlers and Solicitors ordinance is fine the way it's, the way it's laid out.
I'm okay with that one.
Who are you okay with?
Peddlers and Solicitors.
The first one? Yeah. So we just need a motion for.
I have a motion to consider a first reading.
I have a motion to.
I'll make a motion to consider the first reading.
I will second it. Motion by Mary, seconded by myself to. First reading of ordinance 19-806, other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? All right, we'll move on to ordinance number 19-807, ordinance revising chapter 123 Food Vendors.
Call Tom, have him come in.
Tom, if you're listening, come in.
Once again, there hasn't been any changes to the Food Vendor Ordinance since the last time it was presented to you. The one question that was raised was seeking some, I guess, feedback from other communities. I've provided at least those that responded to my inquiries. I once again included an article. I'm not sure if any of you have reached out to any other communities, but I guess it's really in front of you guys for discussion and consideration.
So I'll, I'll start it off here. I, after the other consideration and talking to other people, I think we should drop the, the need to have a city permit to operate a food cart in Hutchinson as long as they have the state license.
Well, and we only really, right now, we only have two that are in the city, right? We have the ice cream truck and we have the taco truck.
In the past year, we've had two.
And we.
Right, and the one that's at the brewery. But they're all licensed by the state. And that's required for them to have a background check before they get their license from the state. So.
Is that true?
I think so. I think if you looked at that.
We don't know what the requirements are at the Department of Health when it comes to, I mean, just like we don't know what the requirement is to get your, to get your.
I think anyone can apply for a food license to the Minnesota Department of Health. Thing is, you can get your license to operate, but they also have the right to inspect you at that particular point in time. They can close you down or leave, depending on how they feel at that particular point in time. Or what your violations are. We have stricter requirements on electrical, we probably do from the Minnesota Department of Health. But again, safety thing, which the license and the, nectar business inside the food wagon is also safety. But the thing of it is, is we're going to get two, two inspections for sure. And that's from the Minnesota Department of Health, an electrical inspector. What I say from the fire marshal. You've got grease in your, in your food wagon or whatever you're preparing with, you have to have a K or extinguisher, which is for a while. So three things that they will check.
From what I've looked at, depending on the type of food license, gonna, is gonna depend on any, whatever the state has for that, so.
So that's what happens every year with the.
Well, let's put it this way, that's what's supposed to happen every year.
So with your, your wagon, is that what happens?
Well, I don't know if the Minnesota Department of Health, if under staff or, or whatever, will always get the electrical inspection and you'll have one per year. And if you have grease, or you're frying oil or grease, then you have to have a K extinguisher. Minnesota Department of Health, and I hope they're not listening to me, but they have, we have not been, the lines specifically have not been inspected in the last two years. Or we really get tagged at normally as a fairground for, call it unfair. Not complaining, but it's a $35 or $40 charge we don't have to pay. On the other hand, I don't know if they're rolling back their services or whatever the case may be. I would just say that, and I'm not complaining, not, not begging for anything either than that. But those are the three things that are required, so.
They are around though. I mean, they've been at the Taste of Hutch many times and.
Sure they have, yeah.
Absolutely.
They're active.
If they fail, if they fail to miss us, that's okay.
I guess I don't understand the difference, you know, when we broke off the food vendor license, before that, they were all part of, you know, the Peddler Merchant License. And we only broke that off to include some specific requirements within the ordinance. You know, and so there is staff time, you know, involved. There's also enforcement possibilities, which we've had some of those, just like we've had other issues. And, you know, there's a cost to that. There is a cost to some of the time that staff has worked on some of the issues with some of the food vendors in the past. I think nobody has complained about that cost other than they thought it'd be nice if it was reduced or had a temporary license. And so that's what we've done. And then again, we've speeded up the process, proved that. I get that, you know, there's some other hoops that they have to run through, but that's not unlike some of the other licenses. I believe the, for example, the liquor license, some of them, I think massage and tattooing, you know, they've got some other requirements as well too, so. We license other businesses. And again, food trucks are just like a Transit Merchant, so we'll see what the difference is. We can make a reasonable temporary license fee. Worked it out where it's a lot quicker for people to be able to do it. We have the sponsor license, just like what people can use for the temporary, for the Peddler and Merchant License as well.
I do think we're losing food truck business by having a permit at all. It seems like they're going places where they don't have to jump through any hoops at all.
I agree.
That's kind of the feedback that it seems when you read through that. Because why would they, even if it's cheap, say it's 15 bucks, why even apply for that if they don't have to? You know, if they just drive somewhere.
Business could invite people to come out. They could even pay, pay the $30 if they, that's what the price was. I mean, because it's really benefiting their business as much as the food truck itself, so.
But the price wouldn't be $30, you know, for a background check. It would be more than that.
It's whatever we set for the temporary license fee.
I know, but are we going to take a loss? I mean, whether it's Tom and his guys doing the background check and, you know, I mean, there's a procedure to get to that completed background check. It might look like if it costs $60, then that's what we should be charging, right?
So it was talked about before, and I believe what you mentioned, Matt, before.
I mean, we haven't, well, we haven't ever gotten into.
The cost.
The, the discussion, that's a completely separate item from what's in front of the council for consideration. I mean, I think the original conversations were around $30 to $35 for a temporary. And with the annual being around 125, I don't think we were, the, the early discussions we've had, we didn't have any, there wasn't any desire to change the annual cost. And we talked about the temporary being $25 to $35. But that has not been an item that's been.
As far as covering some of our costs.
Yes, so, I mean, that, that would be a, you know, assuming you approve an ordinance that we require those permits, then we come to look to assign fees to those. We've, we've historically gone away from including fees in ordinances just because then you have to update the ordinance where we do it through those, through our fee schedule every year. And so that's an easier process, so that's what, if we were to require temporary and continue with our annual, we would then look to update that, that fee schedule through a resolution.
So at this point, we're requiring. Background check, the same as a other vendor.
Correct.
Correctly? Or they got a license for it now? No.
If they do an annual, there's, there's a background check that's done, done once. If we were to go to the temporary, you know, we've allowed up to three consecutive days. You know, if they, if they do one in, in February and then do another one in, in September, we'd still do a background check for.
We'd do a background check.
For both of those, yeah.
So when does a temporary not become a?
Pardon me, that's up to the, who's ever, who's ever looking for those licenses. I mean, I'm going to tell somebody, if you're going to be here eight times throughout the year, you should get an annual. You should get an annual license because it's going to be a lot cheaper. I mean, assuming whatever we set that, that's, that fee at, so. So what's in front of the council tonight for consideration is, is revisions to the current food ord, food ordinance. And that, that was to allow for the temporary license that addresses our multi-vendor items that, that we had talked about, addresses the exemptions that were not included in the previous ordinance. Talked about along with insurance, not longer, we're not requiring insurance anymore if you're on private property. And then with the more administrative order, I think those are kind of the changes over what we have in place right now. So the council's being asked, based off of the feedback you've given staff, to act on that ordinance with those changes. So you're, you're either going to prove it or you're going to deny it. If you deny it, then we revert back to what's currently in place. I guess if there was a desire to change that, you guys would have to give staff that direction.
Well, I, I think that what we wanted to accomplish, at least from my point of view, is to make it easier for people to get the license, streamline it, and that's what's before us. For the, the cost of the permit, we can, that's a whole nother discussion, correct?
Right.
So I, I like the changes we have because of streamlining it and stuff. And, you know, as, as far as the cost of it, I think that's another, another discussion down the road, which, I mean, I think we can address that later. So I guess is everybody kind of comfortable with the changes that, that are before us now with the thing? Mary?
I mean, well, just so everyone's clear, we're still requiring, these permits still requ, these, these changes still require permits.
Correct, then, but we still can discuss the cost of them later, correct?
As part of the fee schedule, right?
As part of the key fee schedule.
So isn't that contradicting what you said earlier though, Gary?
I guess that's where my confusion is because you would.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's a deal where, you know, I mean, this is the discussion. So, I mean, I don't, you know, I, I'm kind of torn in between because I, I know that, you know, it's nice to have, you know, to have control over it. But on the other hand, if we can lower the price, that'd be, I guess that'd be my, my take on it. If I could, you know, either, either lower the price down to where it's easy for them to come into town or just get rid of it altogether. Yeah, so you're right, so.
Because I don't think it's the cost that's keeping people out. I think it's the fact they have to apply for a permit at all.
You think that's the, that's the driving force behind it?
Yes, I don't think anybody's going to get their underwear in a bunch over 30 bucks or whatever it is. But if I had a food truck and I had to apply for a permit to come to Hutch, and if I could go to Excelsior or something and just set up without doing anything, I would just drive to Excelsior and set up and do nothing. I don't have a food truck, so I don't know what these people think, but that's what I would do.
I agree with that. I think we should streamline it and make it simpler, you know? I mean, there's still checks and balances within the ordinance, you know, you have to have, you know, you have to have insurance. You have to have that food license from the state of Minnesota. We still have all the things like you can't park next to the restaurant. You can't be barking and running a radio and all this stuff. All that stuff is in the ordinance already, you know? But I think the, the permit part is the tough part, you know?
There are issues, you can't put something in the ordinance and say, well, if you don't follow the rules, you can't come back, right?
Right.
And that's the purpose of a license, one of the purposes of that. It gives you an enforcement capability. That's why we have licenses for some of these other types of businesses. Some are required by the state. So in instances where, you know, we've had to go out and, you know, check things over.
So what if, what if we required them, if, if you're concerned about the background checks? Because they would have the food license already from the state, you know, and we could get the proof of insurance from them. What if they produced the background check instead of us doing it? What if that's one of the requirements? I know you could do that. You know, if they. Tom?
There's certainly private companies that provide a background check. If you're looking at lowering fees, that's not the way to do it.
My concern would be is you want to make sure you have the most recent one you can get.
Well, if we'd require them every year, if they're coming to have a background check, they'd be doing it every year, right?
Right, but I understood you just be saying like if they had a background check from another community or sometime in the past, someplace else.
Well, I would say within, they would have to have proof of that background check within the year.
So this is just from a regulation standpoint, is that you would, is that something you would then build into the ordinance? So, you know, right now, you know, we talk about needing to be 15 feet away. And so if you get rid, if you get rid of the permit, is one of the requirements going to be? so, if you get a ri, if you get rid of the permit, is one of the requirements gonna be that you have a background check, and then, do they need to... I'm just trying to figure out, do they need to post that in their cart, or is that a requirement that we put in the ordinance that they then have to give to us every...
I would think it would come to the city, that the proof would come...
The only reason I ask that, and this gets into some of the conversations Mark and I had, if they don't give us that...
Then they don't park their vehicle here.
Well, then it's a violation of the ordinance, and it becomes a petty misdemeanor, right?
Which all of the violations within the ordinance can be that, so that's our vehicle of enforcement, not necessarily just the permit, correct?
Correct, but all that is, is a fine.
Right.
So, what we're getting at, is so if they get five petty misdemeanors in a year, they can keep, we can't structure our ordinance to say, hey, if you get a petty misdemeanor, you can't operate in the community anymore, because ultimately, it's gonna come down to a judge, but judges don't handle it.
Or, or if you've had problems in other communities, you know, that can't be taken into account if it's just the ordinance, you know? If it's a license, we can take those into consideration.
So, in my opinion, you, you need to decide on the level of regulation you're gonna require, and it, to me, if you're gonna start wanting them to provide us with a background check, leave more into the licensing aspect.
I don't think that's a good idea, to be honest.
Actually, Chief Gibson.
Yes.
How, this off the top of your head, would, if you would, if I would go and want a background check, would that, would that cost me? Probably more money than what the license is, right?
So, if we were the...
Yeah, if I request one.
Well, our only expense would be just the labor involved in doing that, so, and then also whomever over at City Center accepting the application, so there's probably one to two hours of labor involved in that.
There's labor fees, you know, not wages, but now, if you're gonna go for a private, say, following Mary's, I think that's what you're asking.
What I'm asking, if I, if I come and say, I want a background check done on me so I could present it to the city, what would that cost? What would that cost me?
I don't know that we would do it.
They would go...
There's private companies to do that.
What would a private company, do you, you know, off the top of your head?
What's USA Wrestling charge for that? Probably thirty-five to forty dollars.
I think it depends on the depth of what you... I like the daycare is fifty to sixty-five dollars, or something like this, so.
You know, background checks on the kids?
I'm sure, I'm sure there's different levels of... I would just suggest that, really what we wanna do is permit these food trucks is a really the necessity for a background as part of that. I mean, can't we just issue a permit without a background? And, and really, our enforcement action would be removing the permit, and then you can no longer operate. I look at it from an enforcement perspective, and ease of enforcement, and getting into what you were alluding to earlier, if you just make, if it's just a petty misdemeanor violation for parking where you shouldn't after we told you to move, they can just come back the next day, do the same thing, and if it's in a great spot that they're not supposed to be, they'll just keep paying the fine. But if they don't have a permit, then they can't operate. And it could be as easy as stopping at City Center, handing over three documents, and Matt rubber stamping the permit, and they're good to go.
So, why we have background checks on some of the other ones?
You mean, like, solicitors and peddlers, is that what you're talking about? To me, that's a little different. I mean, if somebody's knocking on my door, and I'm, they're not, I know them not at all, I don't even know if I wanna open the door and talk to them. I wanna see something that says they're legitimate, they are who they are, and they're in the city selling this product.
I don't know if people even know that they're, they could ask if they've gotten a permit from the city.
Well, you should.
And then it's not always just those people that are going door to door, it's ones that are setting up pop-up shops, it's food stands, you know, other types of food stands, you know, the, um, produce places a couple of years ago, that, with the old tents, you know, so, it's a variety of different, uh...
But do you think...
Potential vendors, it could be vendors on, doing the parades, right? I mean, they get a temporary...
I mean, I look at it this way, and I've eaten from the food trucks around town, and I never once asked any of them if they had their background checks. I look to see if I can see that little thing in their sticker that says they're, that they're legal to operate in the state of Minnesota, but I guess I never thought about asking them if you had a background check. I wanna make sure my food is safe.
I'm just saying, why would we treat them different than other businesses that are temporary in nature?
Well, I guess we differ there.
So, really in front of the council tonight is, once again, the consideration of the ordinance as been presented.
For the fourth, fifth time.
Staff's desire is that you act on it. I mean, you've got, obviously, there's two op, well, there's, there's three options. If you guys table again, I don't know what...
Mark went so way.
Like I said, you can, you can approve it as is, or you deny it. All I'm gonna say is that if you deny it, then we go back to what's currently in place, and if there's a desire to change anything else, you're gonna have to give us that direction.
To go back to the rationale and the requests that came before us, I think we've met that, um, and done a lot of, made some nice changes, so I'd make a motion to approve it the way it is.
I'll second that. Motion by Steve, second by myself to approve the first reading of ordinance nineteen oh eight, oh seven?
Eight oh seven.
Eighteen, eight oh seven. Any other discussion?
So, I'm sure you're fine with leaving the background check requirement in, is what you're saying?
Yeah, you know, there again, the discussion on this, um, you know, I guess we, the background check...
Because that would really streamline the process if you didn't have to do a background check, because it would be quick, as Chief Gibson said, you know, it'd just be all handled at City Hall, you wouldn't have to have a police officer do a background check quick. Be a lot less screwing around.
But at the same time, it could still be the same day, right? Depending when they come in. Have a request to do a check, I mean, part of the idea.
If the police department has somebody available of the background checking, but you can do a check of public records in a fairly short period of time. Problem is, is when those public records turn something else on.
Well, there you go, there's a good reason to have it.
Now it's no longer, now it's no longer a short background, because you have to do more investigating. That may involve bringing the person who's been backgrounded in for an interview.
Nothing wrong with that.
Aye, aye, aye.
Well, I, I agree, Chad, I, I, you know, like I said, it, it's a deal where kinda, kinda like the background check, just, just to protect our, you know, the citizens, but, I mean, you, you're all right with probably going without it?
I don't think it's a super risk to take, but, that being said, I'm not passionate one way or the other over it.
Mary, what's your take on it? There...
Well, I was the one who said, maybe we should make it, simplify it a little bit more, but...
Which we have a little bit, but I don't know that we simplified it to the point where food trucks are gonna come at a higher rate, is my concern.
Right.
And so, if our intent was to get more food trucks to come to Hutch, I don't know that we're doing that tonight.
No, we're not.
I agree.
Like you said, they can go down the road to another town, and they just have their state license, and they set up, and abide by the rules, and serve their food.
So, we have to weigh whether or not the risk of having some guy with a food truck and some big criminal record coming in versus, and having more food trucks probably, you know, if we eliminate the requirement, or, you know, not having that requirement, or having the requirement and just not having more food trucks, because I think that's what's gonna play out. Purely speculation, but...
I think it definitely opens up the possibility, what we have now is to, for the sponsorship aspect, for a business to bring some in, I think we'll see an increase in that.
I think we'll see a few, like a handful of events a year, but I don't think it'd be consistent, you know, I think it'll be, the brewery'll probably do it three, four times a year, and...
Right.
That'd be it. So, if that's the intent, I mean, let's...
But I guess Main Street could. I mean, there's opportunities to whatever.
Well, Main Street's already a restaurant, I don't think they're gonna bring a food truck into...
You know, on different events, so.
All right, so I'm gonna call a motion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Close.
Nay.
Nay.
Roll call, Mary?
Nay.
Steve?
Nay.
Steve?
Aye.
Chad?
Nay.
Eri?
Aye.
Fails.
All righty.
So, is it possible, Matt, to make a motion to approve the ordinance with a change of just eliminating the background check, or that to be rewritten up and...
Do you know, that's what that, if that's what you wanna do?
I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I would be fine with that.
So, there's still a permit and license?
But it would play out like Tom said, where they would just pop into City Hall, and it'd still, so we'd still have the enforcement thing that you're worried about, you know, and it just wouldn't need a background check to get the permit, they would just pop in and approve a...
So, I'm just trying to, so if we're gonna draft something, we can, you know, are you still gonna want, obviously, the Department of Health?
Yeah, I'm fine with everything else in the ordinance, and I just think if you just made it, like, super easy to pop in and get a permit, then I think we would see more food trucks.
Please get you some options for consideration.
Sorry, Mark.
Sorry?
Sorry, Mark, yeah.
Fifth time's a charm.
This is part of policy decisions you guys gotta make.
It's a good discussion.
But now, so what do we do, you know, through the first here reading of the transit merchant, as part of that, then we have to still have the fee schedule discussion as part of next reading?
I guess we haven't had any discussion about changing any of the transit merchant. So, we can bring that, we can bring that forward as well.
You schedule a next, well...
Yeah. So...
Second reading that, first reading of that.
Because at the very least, if you're gonna have, you know, I'm not even sure what our general license is, that'd be...
All right, moving on.
It's one twenty-five annual license.
So, we, we'll have to, that'll be a, when you have your second reading, and there would be a, a resolution to, for consideration on those fees as well, so.
All right, Min dot local roadway improvement program and local project partnership grant agreement, South Grade Road corridor improvements.
Mayor and council, we're moving at the speed of government here, and before you is just the grant agreements for the South Grade Road project, the six hundred thousand for the local roadway improvement program grant, and it's about forty pages long, but the heart of the matter is really in the, in the project funding and sources, which I believe is the second or third page of the, of the thing, basically, the six hundred thousand for the LRIP grant, and some local funding, state aid funding, coming up with the project total, and then the breakdown of roadway construct, and trail construction, utility, construction, traffic signals. As indicated, there probably will be some adjustments on the hundred and forty-one thousand dollar grant also, so, this grant agreement should take care of the LRIP grant for the South Grade Road corridor improvement project.
So, why are some of these highlighted and included?
Uh, those were just the, what, that's the grant application document, that's part of the whole package, so, yeah.
Does it matter now have a roundabout instead of just a...
No. No, because they actually, if you get down into the nitty-gritty, and there's some aerials and, and, you know, some layout geometrics, that page for the east block was inserted into that, into that document.
Here...
The one I had, had it in there, the east block was a separate, separate page from SRF.
That's figure four, and it's concept A, which is, um, burn lanes and roundabout.
Okay. I, I, it's not gonna, that's not gonna make a difference, you know, because obviously, that was vetted through state aid also, so, it's the, that project that we're building has already been vetted through states, state aid, so, right, yeah. These are pretty common, you know, you see them in the airport side, we see them on the roadway side. Part of it is, is, you know, this is a, a vehicle by which the state, um, becomes the agent to take care of these different grant opportunities, so there may be some other funds where, where these come from, you know, that different divisions of the state, or even perhaps other agencies. This is just a vehicle, the agreement ends up being the vehicle by which they distribute the money and, and take care of the grant. So, and nothing really jumped out at me as being really weird, so.
It's actually from two thousand seventeen, when the project was related to getting talked about.
Right, right, yeah. I think that the big, the big thing was to get the, the actual numbers laid out correctly on the grant agreement, the, the, the funding split, at page four, I believe it is, yeah. That's, that's, that's really the key to the whole thing, so.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, Gary?
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Sitting special meeting with McLeod County Board of Commissioners on October twenty-ninth... Setting special meeting with McLeod County Board of Commissioners on October twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen at three thirty PM at the McLeod County Fairgrounds.
Mayor, Council, and the Board of Commissioners is, it's actually something at a conversation with them about is looking at just kinda doing something a little different where they wanna bring in all the cities within the county just to kinda have a conversation about kinda what's going on in, in local government. So obviously, we've been invited on to the other communities and that's set for Tuesday, October twenty-ninth.
I'll make a motion to set that meeting.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve to set that meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, Gary.
And I would just note that if there's anything you'd like to see discussed ahead of time, is just let me know or get in touch with Sheila for general items.
All right. We have Hutchinson Utility Commission minutes from August twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, and Liquor Hutch Quarterly Report. John, you have anything else for us tonight? Chief Gifferson?
No, just, I mean, we've had a pretty busy last couple of weeks, so I don't have anything specific to break up, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thanks. Mark, you have any?
Nothing else today.
Steve?
Guess the question for John, you know, is, you know, update on South Grade and the signal system.
Well, apparently the, the signals are en route.
All right.
Had a conversation today trying to, you know, see if we can get them delivered on, onsite rather than have them delivered to a specific site in the city. So we're trying to work that out with the, with the carrier. Sounds like they're planning next week, midweek to do the patching mill overlay, that kinda thing. So, the concept is if the weather holds, you know, we should see that done by the end of the, by the nineteenth, somewhere in there. And then some time to erect and to get everything connected on the signals, so we should, still, still shooting for that November first completion, completion date, so.
So as far as accessibility for any of the businesses, you know, right by cash, you know, that's still gonna be blocked off until?
It'll still, it'll be as is, yeah, as it has been operating so far, so, yeah. I, I think the, the big thing is just make sure those signals are up and running properly and.
Sure.
And, you know, I think it'll be good to finally get that signal replaced. That was our oldest one and one that gave us a fair bit of trouble in the past, so that's good to get that one taken care of, so. All right, thanks.
Two other things. One is, you know, brought up or asked about if we had a speed trailer going in town, don't. Counties was on the fritz. Apparently, that's okay now, but I did ask Matt, who then asked Chief Gifferson, what cost might be to purchase our own, so it's available as we need it. And that would include some data collection capabilities?
Well, John apparently has more insight into this than I do.
We do, we do have one. It doesn't do much in the way of data collection. It's, it's an older model, but it does, you know, it gives you the feedback on the speed. So that is, that is available. We've had it up, off and on, different places.
Wasn't it just up on School Road?
It, it has been on School Road. It has been on Fifth Avenue East. It's been out on South Grade. So there's been other, you know, different areas where we've had it for a period of time.
Do you know if that could be modified to provide some data collection? I guess I just thought maybe that would be an opportunity to understand, okay, do we have a problem here and how much of a problem?
I, I think in, in that case, you'd probably be better off renting those. There's oodles of rental companies out there that provide those.
Just buy one, which I think was seven to nine thousand dollars was the.
Uh, that's for a pretty cheap one. You know, you're gonna pay a little extra to get more data collection. Right, right. So rentals are not a, not a bad way to go, cause you can do that by a week, by a month, by a period of time, whatever you wanna choose.
Suppose if you have a desire to do it for periods of time over years.
Yeah, then, then it might be worth it, right.
John?
Yeah.
I did do some checking, checked with two different companies. Sixty-five hundred to seventy-five hundred will get you the ability to, for a display, not a big LED display, but a display that, speed limit and then your speed. It also gives you the ability to record some of that data. And what I was told is that some of the things that they also use these for is for traffic count, so it can count how many vehicles come by in a day, times a day, and it can put all those markers in there. So I guess if, if what we currently have is a little bit antiquated and we have room and a budget, I would, I guess I would support purchasing something like that. I don't see us having room and a budget this year, but we could certainly try to work something off, maybe pursue some grants next year to purchase something like that.
Yeah, I think we can figure that out, work together and see what we can come up with.
I think if there, especially if you have the opportunity for traffic counts, I think that helps both Public Works and Police Side.
Or we could take it out on community improvement.
I mean, quite frankly, it's seven, five hundred bucks, we can find a way to figure it out in the budget for next year, so. We can talk, we'll look to include something.
Okay. The last thing I had, I sent a note to the council just as an FYI about this new art program called Arts on Main Street. That's done in partnership with Ethos, who used to be Main Street Minnesota, and then Springboard for the Arts. This is a project open to communities under twenty-five thousand people and that are involved with community redevelopment, especially Main Street revitalization. And just thought this was an opportunity to engage some of our local artists in some of the projects that could be done along Main Street. I know Main Street's gonna be redone next year, but there's still an opportunity to make some events that could draw people downtown. I know that's something that Chamber was talking about as we looked at our community group that was involved with the Main Street project. There's no local money needed on it. Bides up to twenty-five thousand dollars over two years, fifteen thousand first year, ten thousand for the second, and that's really for artist-led projects that you'd help fund with that. There's some training along with that, and then there's even five thousand dollars a year for administrative support as part of the project. We're looking for four communities that are involved with that. Two to three-person planning team. Lisa Berg, who told me about the grant, said she'd be more than willing to be one of those people, hope out on that. Does talk about having somebody from the local government. I'd be willing to be that person. Maybe we can find a third person to be a part of as well. So the application is due October twenty-fifth. That's why I wanted to bring it up if you're okay with it applying.
Sure. It's a good program, yeah.
Okay, well, get it put in, all right?
Edit?
Okay, that's it. Chad?
I don't have anything else.
Eric?
Um, the only thing I have is that I noticed our flat map is gone, so it's, I'm assuming it's in preservation mode.
Trying to have somebody respond back to us.
Great.
On that cause, so.
Great.
Came in last week to look at something on it.
I know, it's like, it's gone.
I was hoping that if we took it down, Mary would stop asking me about it, so.
We have our cabinet in the.
Yes, we do have a cabinet now.
Anything in it?
Yes, and it's in it. Good, good. And we're still gonna check on the possibility of getting.
Yes, that's why we're waiting to hear some feedback on it.
All right, good. Thank you. That's it.
Steve?
Uh, Fifth Avenue looks great. Looks like they're coming along really well on Fifth, our, Fifth, our South Grade, so get a lot of comments about the roundabout. Most people don't, actually they drive, which is probably not gonna understand it, but I think it's a good issue. So, I got a little luck here and there, guy, I don't know, he'd be like, where are you going down the street, but other than that, it was fun driving around.
Still get a lot of questions about the parking lots and the, in the park holes in the parking lots, but, you know, people realize, y'all, that parking lots are not, you know.
I am, I am hoping that with the new business going to the mall, I mean, that's what the owners have stated, that's their intentions to fix them.
John, you know, when we talked about the roundabout and with Kent a little while ago, you know, there was talk about maybe a re-education information that gets put out, because these are a little different because they, they don't have the mound. Somebody asked me about how our truck's gonna navigate, they can drive right over it.
Yeah, and that's probably the biggest thing is, is just from the perspective of, for, for most people, it's gonna behave just like a roundabout, don't behave. It, it's just when you're looking at a, you know, a heavier vehicle or a longer vehicle, that there's gonna be a difference. And, you know, the, the good news is, is that that doesn't happen, you know, as often during the busiest times. You know, I see the, the biggest issue is on minis is, is again to soften that angle between the two vehicles, so if there is a collision, it's less likely to be an injury-causing collision. You know, there, you're just changing the angles of, of, of meeting another vehicle, and that's really the benefit from the safety end of it, is.
We could look at doing some educational stuff.
Absolutely.
On website and social, maybe just make that out. Cause you're right, it is a different, you know, I've, I've talked with people and when I shared with them, it's not typical roundabout with the bag, they have no clue what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Right.
So there's, I would see some opportunities to educate people.
Some movies on MINDOTS, right?
Uh, we'll look for that. I know they have, I know they have a, a kind of a fact sheet, if you wanna call it that, on a mini, cause several of them up in the state already. Our neighbors to the east have had them for years in Wisconsin. The minis have been, a lot of, a lot of them in Wisconsin, so. Between the two DOTs, I, I'm sure we can find something that will be helpful and get that posted and hopefully get that word out, so, thanks.
Thanks, John. Anything else, Steve? Yeah?
You know, obviously, I'm gonna be gone the next meeting for conference and then Mark will be.
I'm sorry, so I'll try to pick him up as much as I possibly can for that next.
We'll be out of here by six.
You mean Mark will have to talk?
He'll have to say something. Then one last thing too, and I know Steve was a part of it this morning, but we did have, the House Bonding Committee was in town. We were on their stop, and so it was Representative Birdall, along with the rest of that committee, was myself, Councilmember Cook, John Paulson and Kent, we were able, and then we had a couple gentlemen from Soil and Water Condition, or Soil and Water District. Were able to meet with that group and just share a little bit about the, the project that we're looking to do, impact that it has on the readings, or on their region. I think it went very well. Had some good questions and, you know, I think it's one step in many to hopefully, you know, having some state participation with this. So, I'm gonna ask Steve if he had anything else to add from that, so.
Yeah, just, they came here first and had a restroom break, then John Paulson and I were able to get on the bus to travel over to Roberts Park, and that's where they got off. But on the way over, we went out on Adams to Highway seven and then turned on fifteen Main Street to go over by the, the dam. And looked at that, then went out on Les Coubas, you know, towards, went to Montana, so we saw the sanctuary. Didn't feel like going across the campground road. But that gave us an opportunity to talk about, you know, and for them to see some of the river, the trail part of it, how they work together as state and regional assets. And then get out of the bus at Roberts Park down by the boat landing, and that's where the discussion on the project itself took place. So, I thought it was good and good opportunity for them to see the project a little bit and what we're talking about, and then it was also a good opportunity just to establish more relationships with people. So, really thankful that we were included on the tour, I think, so.
Can we do, if anybody wants a copy of the handouts, I will give them to them. We've got that here too. That's it from.
I have nothing. Germents in order.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, Gary.